Welcome everyone to the Board of Selectmen's meeting October 5th, 2020. The call is being ordered with Pledge of Allegiance. Aye.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to look at the manifest and payroll?
Yeah, I didn't see anything off with it.
Nothing struck me.
Make a motion, we approve the accounts payable manifest and the payroll, accounts payable manifest of 10-5, 2020, and the payroll manifest of 10-6, 2020.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous? Okay, minutes from 9:14, everybody had an opportunity to look at those?
Yep. Yeah, I didn't have any corrections.
John?
Nope, no correction.
Donna?
Nope.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of 9:14, 2020 as written.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
Aye.
Okay, reports from assigned boards committees, budget.
We just had a meeting last Thursday. Chris did net shop going over some of the general stuff that they needed to know. It was basically, majority of the meeting was scheduling future meetings and how it's all gonna unfold with the school and stuff like that. We had a little conversation about the school, but they have a bunch of stuff they have to get through to it. So it was relatively short for a budget meeting in retrospect of how long they can go.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Planning board?
I didn't make the planning board the last meeting.
Okay. CIP?
Nothing scheduled yet. And what was the deal, who lost a member?
Planning board delegate to the CIP has stepped down from the planning board and they have no fallback spot yet.
Is that gonna hinder?
Doesn't have to.
Okay.
We don't have anything from the schools yet.
They got somebody.
They have a person, but not a CIP submission.
Right.
They're working on it.
Planning board's working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know they talked about it, they didn't finalize anything. So it's a committee of three. We have the town stuff pretty much ready to go. Waiting for the school side submissions.
Okay, 300th?
That's tomorrow, I meet here.
Roger that, okay. Anne, Marston?
Uh, nothing, we are, have some folks that are gonna work through re-seeding. I don't know, you know, if Chris knows if it has actually happened yet, but that is, you know, we've got some folks who have stepped up to help out with that, so it's a good thing.
So have they determined why the seed didn't take, was it just bad seed or the soil or?
Drought.
Well, aside, yeah, drought, that would do it too. Okay. Town administrator report?
Just a couple of follow things on your last meeting. The Route 4 property, we spent a bunch of time on that segment and I sent you a draft of a request for proposals from real estate brokers. If you could look that over or let me know any thoughts, suggestions. It's a, I pretty much stole it from somebody else, but it's pretty much a mechanism to just get some submissions from statewide commercial brokers and give you an opportunity to see who's interested in doing that work and then we can work on getting you face to face if you want to do that. I set a rather arbitrary deadline near the end of this month, thinking if you wanted to do something at your meeting on November 2nd, you could, we, I could also see this turning into an off-cycle sit-down with a couple of prospects too, so.
Yep. I looked at it, I didn't have any comments, I'm certainly not an expert in that area, but it looked like it covered what we needed.
Yeah, I'm not pretending to be an expert either.
Yeah.
I think as much as gonna be who's interested and available than who wants to talk turkey.
Yep.
You know, the soonest. Also on that, if you, I got a, I got a nice list from Bonnie Winona McKinnon, who's a Realtor, but not a commercial Realtor. She talked with somebody, commercial, somebody that she knows and got a list of seven or eight names, so I'm gonna go write to those people with this. We'll also look for one industry group I found, you know, we'll just look for other ways to broadcast this.
Yeah.
But if there's anyone that you know of or are aware of in the commercial real estate arena that you'd like to get this RFP up, you know, or any place else we can chase good names.
Have we?
You know, different than the residential market, obviously.
We reached out to the surrounding towns to see who they've had luck with selling town-owned properties?
Uh, usually they're not this, the town stuff is rarely this big.
Okay.
And this commercial focus, usually it's, you know, treads of empty land or houses or whatever. We know, we know who's in that game.
Right.
Around tax needed property, but I have not found, I went looking for municipal solicitation of commercial real estate brokers and only the, you know, only the cities with widespread economic damage are the only ones that have really dealt. But I've found that we've dealt with this scale, so. And I think that's where I got this. And then second, on the Route 4 property, we have engaged the appraiser. You said last week, go do that, so we're under agreement with the firm that did it last time.
Okay.
He is to call me this week to schedule time to go over there and look at it again. And we set it up into, the language escapes me, but basically we're gonna do two scenarios. One is with a, with a restriction on it that we talked about, and it's without.
Yep.
We're gonna get some language on both potential values. They may or may not be different depending on what the highest and best use of the property is, but what the document that you get back is going to, gonna partially answer that question. And I think that's in the signature file, somebody's got that? You've got the appointment of a new part-time police officer. You've got MS-1, which we sent you electronically, that is done. That is the report of the property assessments. Got through the meetings with residents, didn't find any systematic problems. I know, you know, we really feel pretty good about the eval and what that's looking like in terms of possible abatement discussions next year. Been very quiet for a revale, so feel pretty good about where we are there.
So wasn't there like 100 people that were abating what there?
A hundred meetings, 100 conversations, yes.
Some of, I've talked to two people and their abatements went with a conversation over the phone and then a letter coming back saying nothing.
Saying no change?
Right.
Yeah.
There was no, there was no, you know, conversation backwards saying, this is the reason why we're at this value here, or explanation. It was, we'll look into it, and they just basically got back to him as saying, with a letter saying, nope.
We're satisfied where it is.
Right, but they didn't, I mean, which wasn't very satisfying for me to hear when somebody's asking this and they're not gonna have a forum and then we're gonna sign this form tonight, and this form tonight is gonna set that number, so then all these people, and if there's more out there, there's more out there, that have now have to go through the whole abatement process, which if you've been through it, it's not fun, because when they get denied from here, then they gotta go to court, and then it's a big, long thing. I called Jonathan last week and I called him today and I haven't got back to him. I'm not signing the MS forms tonight. Rest of you can, but I'm not doing it. That's all I got an explanation from him.
Okay.
That's just where I stand on it, just so, I'm just gonna put it out there to you guys, that's, you know.
Well, you brought it up, so is there any other comments on that or? I have it right here, I haven't signed it or anything, if that's a general consensus, we'll hold off.
What's the?
The, what the MS-1 is, is reporting to the state that this is the total value of the town. This isn't necessarily a sign-off on every individual property. Granted, you add up all the individual properties, you get to the grand total.
If there's a change, that number's gonna change.
Right, and that's what we use, we use abatements, we use the overlay to amend that, so it would change for next year's MS-1. This is, this is the current report to the state of what we think that April 1st, 2020.
Is it what we think or what we're saying it's gonna be?
Yes, this is the total that we will use to divvy up the property.
To set our tax number.
So the numbers won't change at all, even if there's, they win the abatements? That one won't take a back to next year?
That won't affect the next year.
Next year.
Oh, so then this is no, okay.
So I see what you want to achieve, but not?
Well, I'm just saying, this is how I personally feel about it, so I mean, I'd like to just want to talk to them about it, why these people didn't and, you know, where these, you know, has this happened more than once? I mean, I don't get to talk to everybody that had that abatement, that 100 and some people, but that's still a lot of people. You know, are they satisfied or are we gonna see?
I think the number is comparable to what we usually have in terms of initial discussions. But if, if you wanna let me know what, which specific properties you're, you know, that you're hearing about, we can, we can help with that too. Jonathan was on vacation last week, so if you didn't hear from him, that's, that's why. If you, so this needs to go to the state if you want to set a tax rate. We need to tell them how much property we have, if you want to set a tax rate, so.
What's the time sensitivity of that, Chris?
Well, on paper it's due September 1st, in reality, until we get all the pieces for the tax rate setting. It doesn't kill us, a couple of weeks.
But this impacts, this would impact the December, or this December or just next?
Yes, this December, the bills, the bills that would be due this December, that tax rate is set usually in October.
Yep.
Bills go in early November and they're due in early, early December, so.
Yep. So in essence, the bill should be going out in about a month?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, nobody has to follow me, I'm just saying, this is how I feel. I mean, if you ask my couple signing it, you don't have, that's fine, go for it. Doesn't, I'm not trying to sit here to, you know, delay the process of doing it. I just wanted to express my opinion about what I thought and put it on record that I did say something.
Just so I understand, Chris, so there is the abatement process, the, the overall, if I win an abatement request and my house is all of a sudden valued for less, does that impact the overall town evaluation?
Yes, next year.
Next year, okay.
Everything hinges on the value on April 1st. And that's what, this is, this document speaks to April 1st, 2020. And we'll go through this again next year and look back to April 1st, 2020.
Okay.
MS-535 I see here too.
Yeah, you've seen that already, we found something we didn't like in the reserved and unreserved fund balances and pushed back on the auditors and got that revised, so the last two numbers in there look a little different from the last one you saw. The unreserved, the unassigned fund balance is bigger than what was originally reported.
Okay. Did we wanna talk about the, or do you wanna do that in non-public, the part-time?
We can if you want, I wrote what I, pretty much everything I had.
I reviewed it, if everybody's good with it, I'll set the sign.
Yeah, I'm fine.
I read everything about the kids too, I'm good.
Aye.
Yeah, they're good to me, I'm fine with it.
And the last grant assumptions. Action items review from last meeting, we did talk about Route 4 already, I don't think there's anything you want to add on that. Anybody else have anything from last meeting? No? Assessing the sheet here. Function.
Well, I don't, just go back to the action items.
Sure.
The Route 4, I don't believe was an action item, I think it was, the way it's listed here is it's a topic for the next two meetings. The action item that's listed here is guidance from the BOS to department heads for the budget. So I just, I think that's part of what we're gonna be talking through tonight and over the next couple of meetings, but just kinda clarify that.
Yeah, you wanna roll right into that?
Well, I, I think we're gonna get, are we gonna go through this tonight, Chris? No?
That is, yeah, that's this year's stuff.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We can talk about whatever we want to talk about, we'll go through that.
Right. Right.
Courtney's gonna talk about stuff that affects the budget.
Yep, yep. Okay.
General business? Courtney, you wanna come up now or?
Hey Courtney?
Hello, how are you guys?
Who?
All right, so I had sent over a facilities PowerPoint of our outdoor spaces and some of our indoor spaces that we have kind of been compiling due to COVID and budget timing. It was a good time for us to kind of reevaluate kind of what we had going on. COVID has kind of forced us to have to be super creative this year, which programmatically, we're, we're starting to come back and we have a lot going on, but we can talk about that stuff if you guys want, I have updates if you are interested in hearing about that. But really, I wanted to talk about the packet that I sent you, so the current conditions of the facilities. I wanted to briefly mention the kitchen renovation and then future plans regarding the town beach. So yeah, so with that packet, it's kind of a current inventory of what we have going on. We've noticed that a lot of the projects and the assets that we have were kind of donated by volunteers and then after the volunteers peter out, there really hasn't been a maintenance plan set in place for kind of keeping those things current and usable. So I think going into the budget season, I wanted to come and ask you all kind of what you saw, parks, now that we're parks and recreation, kind of what you saw our role being in how we could possibly maybe look at altering our budget a little bit to help fix some of these things moving forward. So that is in the facilities, would you like me to talk about the other two now or kind of one at a time? If anyone has questions for that packet?
Why don't you walk us through the packet?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I started, started off with our town van and just kind of ran through the assets that we as the recreation department, kind of where our programming is held, what we use. So I kind of put them together because in prepping for like CIPs and budget this year, I wanted to kind of see what was a big need for us or what we really found that we, you know, being that COVID has shifted everything outdoors, what would be used in the future. So I kind of outlined everything. If you go through it, the next page is the kitchen.
Wait, do you want a new van?
Not now, not now. But eventually that will probably need to be, to be added in.
Can the passenger door be fixed so it opens?
Yep, yep, that's on the list.
Courtney, I read that and I was like, what?
Yep, so that's on the list of things to fix, but yeah, so like this was just kind of my way of just seeing kind of what we had, what we were working with, what things were broken or needed to be fixed, and then that way I can kind of put together a plan of the most important need to kind of the least important need.
And is the van, the van is on the CIP?
Yes.
Okay. For?
Hmm, it's out years, we still expect a few more, we still expect a few more.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's low mileage on that and really for future, for future plans with the van, it would be great to have a van that has a little bit more room for senior programming, but as of right now, that's really not the need that we're working with.
Okay.
So that, that can be pushed out much later.
Do you have a need for two?
For two?
Yeah.
Uh, we.
If I recall, there was one, one summer you rented a vehicle, right?
Yep, yep, I think it would be helpful when we're back to full running the summer camp. But being that the future is still kind of undecided, we're not really sure if we can get back there yet. I'm hoping next summer we can get back to that 130 number. It would make beach trips a lot easier than field trip. But um, yeah, so that would be, that would be great, but it's a huge use for, for programs like that and after school too, with carting kids kind of back and forth from location.
Almost like you need a minibus, huh?
That's, that's how everybody gets to the beach too, from summer camp.
Yeah.
Wherever summer camp is held, the staff brings them back and forth to the beach and that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So the next page would be the community center kitchen, and I believe at one point that was on, or in town meeting for a kitchen renovation, so part of tonight was just asking if that was still or possibly something that was still on the table for future years.
Have we had the floor tested yet?
Yeah, we just got the informal results today. There is asbestos in the adhesive under the tiles, as would be effective, the tiles themselves do not have any nor does the coat base.
Okay.
So we can leave it alone, it's fine. Cover it with something else and kind of put it off, or we can abate it, you know, take out the tiles and abate the remaining.
Do we have a rough idea of what that would be involved, how much that would be?
Don't know that yet. Presumably that's the same condition throughout this entire building, that's the same vintage, it's the same tile.
Same one we're sitting on.
Correct. And asbestos, you're putting it off and you're ignoring it, but it's, it's really fine to cover it, so we may not have to go that far if, if we don't want to spend that money now. Somebody's gonna have to someday, but.
So just as a matter of process, my recommendation and it, this is all great, but I don't think we're in a position tonight, you know, to say yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. What I think this board has to do is, you know, talk to Courtney tonight, have a conversation with Sean on another night, get, you know, inputs from fire and department, police and whoever else, and look at it in totality. Not just as priorities or yes, no's for individual departments, but taking a look at the whole thing. So that's my recommendation of process.
Well, we did have a budget put in this, what was it, 18 grand?
Pardon?
The last time we had this kitchen talk was $18,000 roughly.
Yeah, over in that neighborhood without doing the floor.
Right.
But we pulled it.
That was a spitball number, that wasn't.
Right.
But we pulled it.
We pulled.
We pulled that from the budget, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was, that never made it to
Right.
the final budget committee, budget or town meeting.
Right. Okay.
On the radar.
Awesome. Yeah, this is a big packet, so definitely not looking for any answers as far as, you know, getting things fixed, but it's just kind of, it was a lot and I just wanted to bring it to your all's attention. Okay, the, our community center gym, we, and what I like about this too is I've tried to put just some things that we've had, like groups that have volunteered their time to help make some of these spaces, fix some of those spaces up, so like the gym was repainted by one of our, the Betties that play basketball here, so the gym looks really good. There is the same tile that is in the kitchen and there is a big crack on the floor, kind of going through the middle. Also, those rock walls are very outdated. So that's that room, and then there's some pictures of some ceiling tiles that are really high up that are kind of missing and falling down.
Is, in normal times, you've moved summer camp to the school. Is this still used at all for summer camp or after-school programs?
Yes, so with, with that move, it's kind of freed up this facility to do other programming. So what we hope in the future is this programs, like we have dodgeball running now and we have different things that are, that have been really doing actually really great.
Yep.
So we hope that in the future, that alongside the after-school program and the summer camp, that we can still hold camps and things here, more specialized, more like maybe sport oriented, that kind of thing, so this building would still continue to get used. It would just allow us to kind of expand the current programming that we offer, which we have found a need for, so it would be great. So that's just the, that's the gym portion. And then the next page, I move on to the community room, which was used in the past year for a lot of our storage, so we, we have a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff that we've pared down over the years. But that space is now clean and free and able to use. We have some programs scheduled for there. Yep, the back room.
Not the, not the way back?
No.
No, I understand, yeah.
Yeah.
The food pantry, the
Yep.
This room the Boy Scout uses?
Yep. Yep.
Which was disgusting, I was sticking an SAU in there, but that's something different.
No, they, they have seen that and, and I think you're gonna hear from them about potential use of that space as well.
So, then Courtney has no space.
It's a, it's a constant.
Sorry, I mean, it's not, not like right there.
What would you do if they in fact were able to do that? I mean, there's no other space for you, right?
No, we would adjust, we, we at least have the kitchen and sometimes on rainy days, we've used this room and we just make sure it's really clean when we leave, so we can adjust to that.
Would you need it more for storage or for actually more facilities for kids using it?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
This, this room here, that's your, we're seeing, is a lot for storage or is it used, I know the Boy Scouts uses and stuff like that, but is it?
It's mostly for storage right now.
It's mostly for storage though?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, and like we have the back little area.
So if there's a fix to your storage problem, that'd be a great help to you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so that would, if that did happen, that would displace a lot of our stuff, which would no longer have a home.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, that would be hard for the storage wise, for, for the programs, we can work around it, but yeah, for, for storage, we'd need some sort of solution. As we do, we've, we've pared down a lot from what was all left out back, we've pared down and thrown out a lot of garbage, but we still do have like tents and a ton of art projects and stuff like that that we use, so.
Is any of this stuff that you keep in storage there, I'm good, I'm just brainstorming and thinking of different ideas right now while I have you in front of me.
Yeah.
That have to stay warm?
Yeah, so we have a lot of paints and clays and we've moved a lot of that stuff to the kitchen. We were able to take a huge cabinet out of, I believe, the tax office and moved it down there, which has been great, but yeah, so we need to probably get some more cabinets and things for the paint, but a lot of that stuff is now, when we have normal times, divvied up between our storage area at the school and then here too. So that will get smaller, but, but not much smaller, that storage stuff. Right, moving on. Okay, the next page is the outfront area, but then it also goes along back and shows the playground area where the brick walkway is and some of that garden space that is just very overgrown. We had a volunteer group also, we had a bocce ball court out back, which I just found out we had a couple
Go figure.
years ago, who knew? Which is cool, but was, it was, it was given to us a while back, but this group comes here and they help groups or adults with disabilities, so part of their learning is service projects. So they were doing the service project and then they had poison ivy. So there's a ton of poison ivy that's out back near that bocce ball court and starting to creep on the playground area. So I've looked into getting a quote to see how much that would cost and they can't come until the spring, but. So that set us back with that progress, it was all overgrown, they did such a good job of clearing it, but now we don't have anybody really to clean, like clear the rest of the bocce ball court for them to use and then also that would have been a great senior, senior activity to put on our website and just let people know, like, we also could have the group of Betties that, so a lot of people could probably use that spot. So the poison ivy kind of stopped us and I, I have noticed in the back So, um, the poison ivy kind of stopped us, and I, I have noticed in the back trail, there is a lot of that as well, so. We have a lot of overgrowth.
Oh, how do you handle poison ivy?
Spray it, I think. Um, there is a couple different, so you can spray it and use chemicals or use chem- chemical free stuff as well. But then there's also, a company reached out a while back, they're out of Vermont, they can bring goats, pigs and sheep, I believe.
They can eat it?
Which is pretty cool, and they come in for a week and they, the pigs will dig up the roots, the goats will eat it, and then the sheep will also eat some of the stuff.
The only thing that pigs, they dig up more than just those poison ivy roots.
They find everything, yeah.
They'll dig up trees and.
Yeah.
If you let them go long enough.
Interesting, looking for truffles.
So, but that is an option too, and I, I looked at the rest of that and it's a little bit different than those who just sprayed. But it's, it's a pretty cool option too, so.
We do have a lot of goats in town.
We do.
A lot of people with goats.
Yep.
They're busy doing yoga.
Yeah.
But given, given, um, if you took care of the poison ivy issue, then that would be a space out there that you would want.
Yep.
To use.
Yep. Yeah, and that comes in, you know, with the playground and we talked about the playground last year and making those upgrades that. And I think that will fall into place with keeping that playground maintained and. I was out there today with our dodgeball program and noticed how much it gets used, so it's definitely worth keeping and keeping up with and putting our efforts to try to keep that clear, so. That's that space. Um, and I, oh, the other bigger item on that space would be the brick walkway and we're looking at trying to figure out, um, there was a fundraiser that happened years ago with people's names, and so I don't want to just get rid of the bricks. We want to figure out a way to, to, to show them, but.
Yep.
We were talking the other day and it maybe make more sense and maybe more manageable to kind of do a crushed stone pathway or something like that, and then find a better way to, to display those bricks so that people are still recognized for the work they did, but, you know, I, I think looking for advice on that would be, would be helpful and something that I'd like to ask you guys for your input for, um, and how to preserve those names and what the best way to fix that walkway would be.
Those are a lot of names?
Not really. It's mostly on one section and that's leading up to the building.
Right.
Towards that.
Right over there, right?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, and the rest is just normal bricks. Um, but yeah, so I, I just wanted to make sure that we did the right thing by those names. Um, who put their money in, so, that's on that. Uh, the next page is the playground, and we talked a little bit about that with the poison ivy. Um, I have a Primax, Primax came and did an inspection for me last year. So we are still working on tightening some of the things up with the youth zones and that, which we plan to do this spring. To try to get that fixed and ready, but there are some things like the walkway that'll need more help, but as far as the play structure goes, there isn't really a whole lot of broken equipment or anything like that. That's in really good shape. Um, it's more the stuff or the overgrowth around it in that, in that walkway. And there's ideas that I had for the bricks on the next couple of pages too.
What pages are those?
That, I didn't number them, of course. Um, it's on the end of the playground.
Seventeen.
Section.
Like a bench, a flower garden, a walkway?
Yep, yep. Can even build a bench.
Right, okay.
There's different ideas out there. Um, the next area is the pavement right out here. Um, we used to have a basketball hoop on there that somebody donated, it was like a backyard hoop. And that didn't last very long because it wasn't an industrial hoop, so, um, I noticed that with all of this and the school being out and kids kind of, our teen population has been hanging out here a lot more. Um, a couple groups of kids, some are playing, you know, spike ball and some are playing other things, but there was not really anything for those ages to do around here. So a thought and a distant thought for something, you know, later down the road is, is maybe making that pave space some sort of basketball hoop area. Um, so that, I have a vision on that page specifically, I just wrote a vision of what would be neat there and what kind of the need, when we did have the basketball hoop, it did bring a lot of people, not a lot, but it brought a good a number of teens to come in and play. Um, a community space for them to gather and a safe place too, so. But I think at the least, um, that area would be, it would be awesome to have it repaved just for safety issues, um, with kids and we, when we have camp here, we, we play games on there all the time, um, but that's pretty much that. And it goes down, the next page goes into the trails and the community center trail, which is wraps around the bandstand and back up here. Um, we have Boy Scouts a couple years back, one, uh, Boy Scout did an exercise loop trail there, so there's some equipment that's still left. I think some of it has been moved around a little bit, um, and weathered, so that's out back. And then the ball fields are still maintained by NYA, so those look good. Every year they do a cleanup and help us clean that up and.
Why wasn't marked off this year?
What?
Why wasn't marked off this weekend? There's stakes all around the ball field.
Oh, I think they probably suited it to keep the infield, to keep people off the infield. I don't know that for sure, but usually they try to do that so that people don't walk all over the infield. And with soccer, you have all the parents that come from the parking lot back and forth, so that would be my guess, but I, I don't know. Um, so yeah, so there's some pictures of just some things. Um, I would like to eventually work with the trails committee to see if maybe they have some extra hands to help us kind of clean that trail back out. Um, there is a lot of poison ivy down there as well. Um, but moving summer camp to the school has kind of helped alleviate that problem. We use a lot of the trails over at the school now, which is good. Um, and then the next one is the bandstand. Which we use all the time. Concerts were awesome this year. We only had four, but it ended up being a really good time. Um, we did notice that the floorboards are, are wearing down a bit. So there's holes and there's things that, we had a volunteer replace the steps, which was great because those were rotting out. Um, but as far as that goes, it's still in pretty good condition, really good condition. Um, we had an awesome volunteer paint it and that paint's kind of fading, so, you know, looking to freshen it up in the future, but still standing and still used very much. Then we go on to Marston.
Do you know if they seeded again this week?
I haven't heard, but I can check in. I know they were planning on it.
Uh, I texted Matt, I haven't heard back from him.
Okay. Yeah, so, um, hopefully that's going to be reseeded again or, or has been reseeded. We had it mowed three times, I believe, this summer, um, to try to get some of the weeds down. It is mostly weeds that have grown. Um, but hopefully we're gonna get those, that grass to grow, which would, which would be awesome, because once we can get a field of grass, even just the rec, we can do some sort of programming out there, so, um, just hoping that it grows. And the town beach is my second to last page and with us, and that kind of brings me to the third point that I kind of wanted just to, to bring you attention tonight. Um, we decided this year with COVID not to staff it. And I went down there about midsummer and realized that all the sand had grown grass.
Mm-hmm.
So it's all totally overgrown, um, thanks to you, it was mowed, so, um, but. Yeah, it would probably need some work this spring to get it back to the, to the town beach and to what it was. Um, moving off of just the facility part, they're working with PD this year and trying to keep people out, and we have some hard time, we have a hard time withholding people accountable to the sticker. Um, I think it makes sense, but with no staff down there, it's hard to, to trust that, yeah, people are doing the right thing. And so I think there's, I have three different approaches to managing the town beach and if you're interested, I can run through just my thoughts. Um, but I do feel that if we are gonna try to hold rules and hold people accountable, that maybe we have more staff down there or try to come up with a way to, to do that, because we did have a lot, I would say more than normal, just people who weren't residents down there. A lot this summer. Um, and I know PD is getting tired of it and it's, it's hard to put all that on our gatekeeper.
I think some of those, uh, non-residents actually were boats coming up to the beach, wasn't it?
I think so too.
So they didn't drive in per se, though there were some.
Yep. So, um, and I think that, that raises a bigger question with how we want to staff it moving forward. I can typically, you know, staff a couple of lifeguards, but those are typically fifteen year olds.
Yeah, you're not.
So I can't have a fifteen year old try to kick people off the beach and check stickers, so we, we tried to improve that by adding a beach supervisor, which was great, but only during those times that, you know, nine to five. And it was Monday through Friday, so weekends and nights are when it's mostly crowded, and I think when most of the issues occur.
So what, what, you said you had a couple of different options?
Yeah.
What are you thinking?
Um, so we can keep it the same. We hire a beach lock attendant, we hire a few lifeguards, we hire a beach supervisor, and then we staff it from Memorial Day to Labor Day, and we've, I've tried to staff weekends, but we haven't been able to find a person to, to bite on that job. Um, so we typically go nine to five, and that is to help with summer camp and having lifeguards there for all the kids that we have. Um, another option would be to hire lifeguards just with camp, which is what a lot of rec departments do across the state to kind of travel with us to beaches, and then we'll travel with us to the town beach, and maybe we don't staff the beach there. Um, so my second option would be no staff at all. We could just hire lifeguards to help with our camp, um, throughout the season that it's used. Um, or the third option, we can kind of look into different, we can hire lifeguards, a beach attendant, but then maybe have people spaced out throughout the day at the front gate, checking people's stickers and, and making sure that the rules are being followed. That, that would be more of a budget issue if we went that, that far and staffed it that, that much. And, and the other point would be, is it even used Monday through Friday that much? It would mostly probably be used on the weekends at night.
Well, that's my question, maybe, I mean, we didn't put a counter to see how many cars go in and out, so.
Right.
We don't know.
We don't really know, and I only know when I'm down there with this, with the camp and people kind of know when we're down there, so they, they kind of avoid us, which I don't blame them, because we bring fifty kids down there to swim, so. But I think it, it's worth a, a talk and a discussion just to see what we kind of want to do as a town to move forward with, with staffing that. Um, I know this year there was some, we, we always have the lock cut at least once, but this year the lock was cut three times. So with cars getting stuck behind the gate and, and that kind of stuff, so it's been a little bit challenging this, this summer.
We don't hear about a lot of the, whatever inconveniences or discomforts that the residents are experiencing while they're there. Um, we probably don't hear about much of it because it doesn't reach the level of being a police call kind of thing.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we don't, but we don't have any people there to observe it and, you know, measure it. We really kind of wanting for feedback on that, what's, what is the residents' experience at the beach when we're not there? Um, you know, we had one, one incident where somebody was, I don't know.
Yeah, not from town.
That, that, of course, that reaches the level of a police call, which was a pretty drastic problem.
But then we had like fourteen teens and half of them are from Portsmouth. So, you know, it's like, depends on, on what side of it.
Yeah, and obviously the weekends and the evenings are a completely different scene there.
Yeah.
Than Monday to Friday, nine to five, when we have eyes on it.
So how are other towns handling it, Courtney?
I think I, so I called across to a couple different people that I thought were kind of in the same, so like I called the town of Guilford and a couple people up north, and a lot of them have gatekeepers and gate attendants. Um, that seems to be the norm, at least that turns people away at the gate if they don't have that sticker. Um, or it allows somebody to give somebody a visitor pass with the, so we still encourage people to go and we want people and families to go together, but you can't all fit in one car, so at one point I tried to do a temporary visitor pass so that my beach supervisor would give that to them, but it's hard to pull him off the beach.
Right.
When he's supposed to be making sure the fifteen year old guards are doing their job, so. And it's not that busy, but, you know, we have, there are moments where it, it does get crowded down there.
So the gatekeeper is different than the beach supervisor because the beach supervisor is overseeing the lifeguards.
Yeah, yeah, and training.
Because the lifeguards, we can only get our fifteen.
Yeah.
Year olds, and then the gatekeeper is pretty much at the gate.
Yep, and that would be.
The gatekeeper that we have now lives across the street, walks over and unlocks in the morning and goes back in the evening.
Right.
I was wondering who locked it.
Yeah, so he just locks the, kind of like a gate locker.
Really?
Um, so.
What happens if he's out of town?
So what were the circumstances around the padlocks getting cut?
I do think one was the dam bureau, and we cleared that up early in the summer.
The dam bureau did that?
Yeah, they like to do that to us every now and then if we don't.
Didn't know who to call?
Yep.
Or they call somebody at five fifteen.
Yes. But they usually know to call the PD because I usually give PD fire, I give everybody a key so we can get in if no one's here. Um, but I think that we've, we found that that happened one time, but then two additional times and it got cut, which wasn't them, because I don't come that often, so.
Because somebody's car was stuck inside the gate?
Yeah. Yep.
So that, that was the other two locks?
Mm-hmm.
Are we, do we charge those people that were stuck behind the gate for the inconvenience of the, the cut lock?
We don't know who those people are.
Oh, they cut it themselves?
They cut it themselves, yeah.
Nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the person that locks the gate.
That's been a couple of years.
The person that locks the gate doesn't go all the way down just to check?
No, that's never been.
Beach closes at seven, it closes at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I hear you, but.
But if it's costing us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Courtney, just out of curiosity, and, and maybe this has been answered before, but, uh, I actually had a number of residents ask me why the, uh, beach isn't open until Columbus Day, where September, a lot of month, you know, a lot of the days are still fairly warm. You could use it on the weekends, if anything opened on the weekends. Is there a rhyme or reason why it's closing at labors? Because all your staff are young kids going back to school or?
That was typically it, and that I believe is what it kind of has always been. Um, we have the last couple of years when COVID wasn't a thing, we have extended the beach gate opened, and I've done, we've done like a month extra.
Okay.
So that I think is, we don't have a problem with that, you know, when the season's right.
Attendant, our gate attendant can do that.
Right.
That's, you know, it's, it's kind of done locked, and we have somebody that's interested in doing that job for, it's community service as much as it is employment to walk over there. We don't, you know, we're not gonna have an officer drop what he's doing at, at eight o'clock in the morning to go around the gate.
Right.
Right, so it's, we're in a, in a lucky position that we have somebody who lives right next to it that's willing to do that job at.
Yeah.
Is it eight, nine, eight, five, whatever it is.
Yeah, nine and seven, I believe.
If he sells his house, does the responsibility go with it?
And so that, that's another thing that boxes the sand in a way that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But obviously if someone else stepped forward, be willing to take on that extra month, that definitely.
Sure.
So.
Just nobody lives there.
Right.
Yeah, so you're, you know, in, in the ideal world, what you would want is a beach supervisor and a gatekeeper. And it would be just the nine to five, or again, the ideal world would be the evenings and.
Yeah.
Weekends, because I would think weekends would be the bigger problem.
Yeah. Ideal world, that would be, yeah, that would be it, and then that would allow us to do more stuff there. We could get into other things and there's a, you know, in Barrington and UNH does paddleboard rentals and all that kind of stuff. So there's a lot of stuff that we could do with that property, um, but limited to our staffing and, and kind of how it's always been done.
Yeah.
Um.
How many adults or fifteen year olds do you have per group of children?
So we've only been able to hire about two to three lifeguards. That's about all we can find.
Can we supervise?
We have our staff too that help with that, and none of the kids can go above their armpits.
Well, I'm more concerned with, uh, neighboring properties and the kids group gets to be too big, some kids tend to wander off or whatever, and next thing you know, you're looking for someone in the woods on someone else's property.
When we bring the kids down. When we bring the kids down and we always set up swim lines too.
Okay.
So this year was different because of, we didn't staff it at all, so we know, we didn't set the swim lines up or we didn't have any of that up because it was kind of used at your own risk. But typically, our lifeguards, they are responsible for in between those swim lines. Now, hopefully goodwill, if they see something happening, they're going to act. That's what they're trained to do. Um, but that is kind of our mold. We have the swim line set up and then it is just out in front and that is kind of their.
Think you were more talking about venturing to other people's properties, Chris, yeah. That's a, not the town property, but taking a walk down the damn and going for.
What's the hours of a tuckaway, the beach there? They don't let people down there at nighttime, I don't believe, do they?
Uh, if you're staying at the, if you're staying there, you can go.
They can swim all night?
Sure.
I don't think you should, I don't think we should be, nine to five is fine with me. I don't think we need to keep the place open all night. I don't think the neighbors probably wouldn't like that either.
What neighbors?
I mean, if, again, if they're out there making noise, I mean.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, you can't keep that unlocked there. Either people have fires out there and doing stuff and doing crazy crap. That doesn't happen at the state park because they have a, if you work there, they're driving around, you're not telling you no.
So it's definitely important that we keep it locked and I think we, it's been seven. So that gives people a couple hours after work to go down and use it, but yeah, it's been, we've been closing it at seven.
But not on the weekend, it's unlocked?
Same hour.
But same hours.
Okay. Hey, you mentioned the condition of the beach. Uh, what has to be done to that to bring it back to where it should be?
Sand.
I think sand, but I also think turning up the current sand that's there. I think we need to actually go in, shovel it, continue, usually my my staff rakes it every morning because it gives them something to do and I think that gets rid of that weed growth because there's activity on it. Um, so I do think it would need to be weeded and I think that turning up the sand would help a lot. I'm not sure we, yeah, I'm not sure what else really. Um, but there is some overgrowth too that we could cut down to kind of expand because a lot of that area like around the shed has overgrown too.
That's what I noticed. All those little birch saplings have just encroached on the beach.
Very small.
And, yeah, when I was a kid, my my grandmother used to sneak us down there. So, yeah, lifelong criminal, but I, I mean, granted, I was smaller, but I I just remember that the beach area was much, much bigger and there were like mult, I just remember multiple picnic tables being around it um, farther back into the evergreens and there wasn't all that parka brush around there. So and given that, you know, the town is almost doubled in size in the past twenty years. You know, hypothetically, that's twice as many people that might want to use it, so letting the beach shrink isn't really in our interest, so.
How many picnic tables were there? Two, three?
There were three. We have had some mischief over the past couple of years and some have rotted out.
Three, three what? I'm sorry.
Through picnic tables. We bought a new one, I think, two years ago and that one's down there. I think there's two currently.
Is that a plastic one now?
No, it's a very heavy, I got it at Swings and Things and it's.
You can't move it by yourself.
You can't move it. It's probably about eight hundred pounds.
Okay, so that that was the intention?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And we have, we have our lifeguard chair that we chain and because that's ended up in the water too a few times. At least once. But, um, so with the chain, though, it hasn't ended up there, which is good.
What condition is the shed in?
Uh, the shed is in pretty good condition. I, it would be nice to have it winterized just so that we can keep the beach stuff over at the beach. There's a lot, it was, I think, probably built by, I'm assuming kids, that's what the, that fan stand was built, a lot of our.
What what's involved with winterizing it?
Just closing off the holes, just very minimal. Um, just making it so that no critters can get in and keeping, yeah, keeping them out.
Did you ever have any luck finding a maintenance person?
No.
Okay.
Still looking.
Okay.
Yeah, so it would be good to get that stuff over there and that would free up some of the the storage area in the back community room.
So hypothetically, just throwing this out there, hypothetically, should the school commandeer that space back there and you are less scrambling for space, can you use the old town hall or no?
Yeah, we can use the old town hall.
So let, I mean, granted, it's across the street, but I mean, that won't hinder your ability to still provide programs, right?
No. No, we can use that space. We still, we have line dancing that has resumed over there. That's a really good adult space
Yeah.
for for programs and I hope that we can get senior programs back up and running sooner rather than later. So that would also be a good space for that too. But yeah, I don't see that being an issue.
Move your storage over there too?
Yeah, we got dry storage. Part of that building isn't.
Library, has a bunch of stuff in there.
Yeah.
They do.
There's not as much space, dry space there as there is here.
Got a lot of stuff.
And that space isn't really.
All this space and it's not dry. All right.
Well, that's what I was trying to figure out, like from a programming perspective, sure, you can use a space over there, but, you know, part of the room here is, it's your storage.
I think honestly, it would be difficult to have a lot of our stuff over there. That would be okay for event storage. Um, but having that programmatic stuff
Yeah.
not here would be challenging.
Yeah.
Do you have a lot of event storage stuff?
I have what?
A lot of event storage stuff?
I do, like tents and we have a lot of stuff from Nottingham Day in past years and things that we've accumulated for Earth Fest like trash cans and bigger things and I have a lot of Halloween stuff.
So would there be stuff at the old fire department? That big garage there? I know the highway department uses a little and.
Yeah, we we store beach stuff in there before.
Van goes in there.
Yeah, the van, the van spends the winter in there. There there's room to be at in there for, for something.
Does it need to be locked and secured, this stuff, or is it just? I mean, the building is locked, I mean.
No, it is locked. I think Sean locked it. So, I mean, yeah, we could put our tents and our bigger things over there, yeah. It's, we just don't have a great, the van isn't great at transporting things back and forth because the way the seats are. So it's hard to get those bigger items in there.
I also, I I came, I mean, the way I'm kind of thinking about it is, is it really fair for us to say to Courtney, oh, you know, you you just gotta spread your stuff all over town or over four buildings?
I was just coming up with ideas of other spaces we can use until we figure out
Yeah.
what we're doing with here. Uh, you know, I was just throwing ideas. I wasn't expecting you to
Yeah.
your staff all over the place. I mean, obviously, we want to keep.
I mean, do you want to build a sixteen by twenty garage out here for? We can do that too.
No.
Well, that'd make it like convenient because then everything would be right there.
What's the rough square footage of that shed at the beach?
That's like an eight by ten or something. That's not that big.
Yeah.
But that's enough for your?
That's enough for beach stuff. Oh, yeah, for for now, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
So Courtney, just.
Huh?
What about the conics? You know what I'm talking about when I say conics?
Yeah, the Sealand vans.
No, the, uh, those metal storage containers.
Yeah, Sealand van.
I call them conics. So, um, how about one of those?
Or a half, one of the half ones?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You know, that looks like a railroad car without the wheels and
Yeah.
the survivalists bury them in their backyards and turn them into bunkers, but they're, they're really good, uh, storage containers.
Yeah, we had that at UNH tables and stuff like that, so.
And those are still, you buy them used, like, cheap.
No critters getting in them either.
No, no critters.
No critters.
That would be nice.
So that'd be good for your weekend.
Were you buying one of those? Are you talking the same ones that we were buying for the dump to stick the tires in?
I don't know where you got that that one, but.
Oh.
Same concept, yeah.
Right, same concept.
Yeah, why is there?
So.
No, I'm just saying that that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to.
So Courtney, so with regards to the beach, tell me if I've captured this right, the big thing that you're looking for guidance on is more the operationalizing of it. Like, you know, how do we want to staff it? For what hours do we want to staff it and how can we control access? That that's the big guidance that you're looking for.
Yes, that would be great.
Um, so there, so there's that and I mean, the the staffing has the, um, budget impact piece of it, right?
Yep.
Do you think, so everything that you, this is great, everything that you've laid out here, I appreciate it. And I'm not asking you to answer this question now, but with regards to preparing the budget, if I asked you to identify the three most important things to you for the next budget, could you do that?
Yes, I could.
Okay. That might, I I don't know how you guys feel about that, but I think it would be helpful to.
Absolutely.
Yeah, prioritize, yeah.
Well, I think it should come for her because she's the one that's.
Yeah, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm happy that we have all this to our attention. It's a great, um, you know, what you did was really nice. I just found it very interesting looking at it today. It was nice to see, I mean, I can see identify a lot of the stuff that I saw on there and there it knows a problem, but it's a good way to lay it out.
Thank you.
Okay.
So.
The other, the other question that she walked in with was the kitchen here, what kind of, you know, is that a priority to you? And I think underlying all this, and I don't want to step on your thing, but um, you know, we have this mountain of deferred maintenance.
Well, at some point, we need to start. Undeferring it.
We we need to start undeferring it. Um, unspoken is who's who's responsible for that? You know, there's, she's our parks director. Some of these things are kind of like parks function. Some of them cross over into other things. Some of them are shared spaces, some of them are.
Yeah.
You know, some of them are like buildings like this, she, her programs use part of it and others, not other parts of it. Um, we we just don't have a, um, we don't have an overall vision for how we maintain these things. It's the same question of, did we find a maintenance guy? We face the same kinds of questions with our non-parks
Yeah.
assets.
Yeah. Yeah.
And they, uh, between Public Works and RAC, they've done a nice job of, uh, you know, Public Works has been helping in ways that they haven't helped before.
Been very helpful.
Taking on things that, that they're just better equipped either in skill or time or equipment to do minor stuff or big, you know, it's typically things like, what, picking up the trash buckets.
Yeah, which has been a huge help.
Things like that, you know, just, they're just kind of Public Works, he kind of functions and Sean's taking that stuff on for her, so. We have that underlying weakness of, you know, we we've, we've got all these assets and we just, we we don't have a structure in place to maintain them very well. This is not a new thing. These these problems that Courtney has identified for you didn't pop up this year.
Yeah, you're right.
Um, and the same is true with that list of problems with this building that we found in the fire inspection and the back building here and the old town hall that that you, you know, cobbled back together.
Yeah, yeah.
There's, there is an overarching asset management problem that we have.
How do most towns do that, Chris?
What, manage assets like that?
Who who has that responsibility?
Uh, it's different in different places. Some, it depends on the size typically. I mean, how mu, how much, you know, how many assets do you have to manage? I mean, what types of, how how old are they? It is, um, it's not uncommon for there to be, I think we're probably a little small for a facilities
Yeah.
director kind of person.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, a town a little bit bigger than us or with bigger investments in buildings would have a person, like the school has a facility director.
Yeah.
Um, who has that sort of skills. He's not a janitor, he fixes things, but he's also a supervisory, you know, you know, skilled labor plus management capability kind of person. So you see that in in a lot of towns. Um, in some places, you'll see Public Works, that it's part of the Public Works realm and that can be, um, you know, it can be the buildings and the parks and the cemeteries in some places.
Other Raymond does.
Right, so Public Works maintains all those things and Raymond, that's that's common. And they, you know, I I think it's probably an old challenge point for, you know, who's responsible for that. You your peers probably struggle with their Public Works, people trying to get their attention and get on the top of their priority list.
Yeah, and I ask that question to some of my peers and it's a lot of hodgepodge of like, this person does these set of skills because the town will, it just depends on each town and how unique it can be in the need, so.
And who the old timers are, that have always done those things.
Right, right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I do think we should have a plan, right, of here's, here are the things that, from a infrastructure or from a facilities perspective, we need to take care of and here's the priority and here's how, you know, we're going to tackle it. We talked about doing that, I think, if we all have it.
Is there enough work for somebody full time?
Uh, not in the list that you just saw.
No, in general, all the buildings. Like, we just had a maintenance person, just a maintenance person. I know you said it was had.
Probably not, uh, well, so many different kinds of things, like, uh, if, uh, like if, if we had somebody that did, that fixed all the things that you just got a list of and fixed all the things that we have in this building, if this person existed.
Yeah.
And they mowed, that's a big chunk that we contract out right now, right? We don't have the gear, we don't have the people, we don't have the storage for the gear, we don't have the truck to move the gear. We don't, we're not in a position to mow, we contracted outright. Same with the cemeteries. That you could, you could easily make a job out of all those things indoors and out and, uh, and and fill the cold weather time with, you know.
A plug-in for a snowplower?
Maybe, you know, if that person existed, um, you know, we, you'll hear, you'll hear, uh, you know, if you talk to the cemetery trocades, you walk through a cemetery, you can find plenty of things that could be fixed.
Right.
You know, we have, we have towns, we could always.
A lot of, a lot of stuff one person wouldn't be able to handle, though.
No.
Right, finding all of that in one person is really hard.
No, that's a unicorn, but
Right.
like, you you could get somebody that is, you know, a general mechanic type repair person that's got enough basic skill to patch drywall, change a bulb, you know, plunge a sink, whatever, but knows enough that if they need an electrician, they're gonna, they got somebody to call if they need a, you know, if they need to have the septic take, you know, pumped out, they know who to call for that and and so on. And it would probably make the most sense, you know, to put it under Public Works, you know, like you're saying Raymond does, right? Because it doesn't make sense to parse out every room to a different department, you know, because that just makes the the line items, the budget, it just makes it all that much more complicated, you know. Treat the, treat the town hall as a singular facility, have one, you know, one mechanic to maintain it and have them answer to, uh, to Sean. That's what I would say. Now to find that person.
Yeah, I mean, that's, uh, uh, you know, are we willing to take on a another, you know?
Another mouth to feed. Yeah.
Can't even fill highway.
Well, I mean, there's the return on investment, right? There's the building being maintained and not costing the town in the generally more expensive repairs that are required when maintenance is deferred for too long. So there's a little economy of skill there, right?
Yeah.
By having, you know, a resource assigned to that. And then having that person available if Courtney needs a door fixed on the shed at the beach.
Yeah.
Well, I I think that that's a discussion worth continuing. Uh, obviously, we're not going to solve that tonight, so.
That being said, I think we're pretty much set with this topic.
I, just one question. Um, so just how are things going in general? Like, are we doing anything for after school or?
We are not doing, well, first off, I think we're we're doing pretty good right now. Um, we have kind of creatively have tried to, we've had to kind of turn everything over and upside down to to meet some needs of what kind of the community needs. We can't, we weren't able to do after school because of the hybrid model and essentially that would have made, I would have had, we would have had to find a staff person for every classroom cohort and then our numbers would be capped at fifteen kids because we were only able to have the, you know, the cafeteria. And that's just an example, but
Yeah.
the numbers and the staff that we would have need wouldn't have ever come out. And then, so we tried to see, okay, well, maybe there's room with the bus and the bus numbers were so low and they can only allow twenty-five kids on a bus that we weren't able to kind of get in that. And then we thought, well, okay, could we transport with the van and do something here? But if the bus is capped at twenty-five, it really would have made, we would have probably had to put three kids in the van and then we would have made a whole bunch of trips. So it just kind of did not work. Um, but we've, um, we've unrolled, we have our hundred mile challenge, which is for all ages and we have over eighty-three people registered for that, which is awesome. And that's fully on your own, COVID friendly. We have flagged football running that we decided to do in-house this year. We usually join a league in Exeter, but we did in-house, which was great and we kept it in. but we did in-house, which was great, and we kept it in the same SAU with all COVID precautions. We have over 60 kids registered. So that for future flag football, we want to look at keeping the league in-house. It's such an awesome program and it's a unique set. It's not soccer, it's not, it's just, it's its own thing and it's awesome. Um, so finding field space for that next year to be able to host that program would be huge and something Marson could be used for.
Yeah.
We're doing our intern from UNH. We, we secured another intern, which was awesome. He's doing a dodgeball program for teens, which we've never been able to staff a teen program like that. And they had last night, today was their first night, um, trying to do that outside. And then we have CIT, which unrolls next week as well. And CIT is counselor in training. So instead of trying to smush that into summertime, we decided to break it out to hopefully gain some participations and get some funds in. Um, so right now, we, you know, without summer camp being fully and without before and aftercare, that took a huge hit with the funds we were able to bring in and, and send out. So, um, that's really cool. We're also doing, we've been doing legacy lunch deliveries. So that's our senior luncheon. We've been doing that since COVID started and deliver over 30 lunches every time, which is awesome. Way more than when they came here and I think it allows that. So we're hopefully moving forward if we can have the people come and meet, but then also deliver to those who can't. We still want to keep that.
Where are you getting the food supplies for that?
Volunteers. And we have a little bit of budget item. We have a line that we use for, um, senior luncheon, but a lot of volunteers have come from employees and Shelley and Food Pantry and one of the churches are gonna, they're gonna do the, um, Thanksgiving lunch, so we don't have to do any of that, which is huge. So we've had a lot of help, which has been great, and it's really fun to see their faces and have some communication with that population. So we're super excited about that. We're gonna launch a STEAM program for, for first grade through sixth grade kids, um, engineering, art, math, all that, you know, something different. And then, um, we just launched a clue program, which is a life-size version of clue. We hid clues in our back trail. Families can go at their own time. We asked that they don't touch the clue game, um, solve our mystery and, and let us know, and they get entered to win and and we have awesome beach porn certificates for them to hand out, so.
Where, where'd those come from?
So we're super excited. And then Halloween, we decided that we were gonna do it differently. So we're bringing back our spooky walk, gonna do it in that back trail. Um, spaced everybody out. We've had families, we already have one of the times already fully booked, which is awesome. 30 people, um, in each timeframe and then.
You still need to help with that?
What?
You help with that?
Yeah, if anybody wants to volunteer, it's on Halloween. We would love help handing items out to, to families if, if that's.
I'll just throw it out there. I've always volunteered, so I would encourage other board members to do the same.
Do you have costumes?
No pressure.
Costumes would be great.
Oh, do you have costumes?
Oh, available?
I mean, we can't, we can't get away with the ugly sweater thing for Halloween, right? It works for Christmas.
It does. It works great for Christmas.
Yes, but for Halloween.
Big pumpkin or something, or your orange would be great. Um, so we're doing that and then we are, um, we have some room from not doing Earth Fest and big things like that. We're gonna do to-go boxes and Halloween to-go. So families who aren't comfortable with going in the walk can still have a Halloween experience. So we're really excited about everything and we're starting to, I think the, the scary of school is winding down and people are looking for some outlets and and I think it's going well and we're taking COVID very seriously to make sure we're doing what we can to, to keep everybody safe, but hopefully keep this going and we're losing my assistant. She's going on maternity leave soon, so, um, getting it in now while I have a full staff.
Courtney, I'm really impressed with how you guys are doing everything and how you're managing it.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're doing a great job.
Appreciate that. It's, it's fun. My job is really fun.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thanks.
You too. Take care.
All right, quarter three financials. All right, so you've got this electronically. The, this is, uh, essentially, we, we ran these, uh, to get, uh, to the budget committee last week, so it's, it's missing a week, uh, but, uh, think of it as three-quarters of the year. The, on a line item basis, this is a mess. Nothing, nothing has gone according to plan this year, obviously, for obvious reasons. But total-wise, we're really, we're in fine shape. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna finish the year with, with room to spare. Uh, I will just touch on some of the, the really big variances that are evident here, and if you want to ask questions about anything smaller than that, I'll be happy to give it a shot.
Wait, when you just said it on a line item basis, it's a mess, is it because of, um, having to move things around in lines?
Well, things that are, you know, things that are, uh, things that we weren't able to do, you know, are showing up way underspent.
Yeah, yeah.
Things that, things that we didn't expect to do. We have to spend money on it. It's, it's that.
Yep.
It's that kind of mess. It's, um, you know, just a, a budget is a plan and the plan just didn't match the year.
Got it.
At all.
Yep.
So, uh, just in terms of real big numbers, um, uh, you'll see in the, in the town clerk, uh, realm, that's in, starts on 20, line 26 on the left-hand side. Probably the, the town clerk and the recycling center are the place where we've seen and where our people have seen the biggest changes in day-to-day work. It's where most of our traffic with the public is. It's where most of our, you know, person-to-person contact is. So what do you know, COVID has changed those operations the most.
Yep.
In the town clerks arena, we also had a transition in that role and we've got all these elections going on all at the same time. So, um, but we're, we're well over budget there, um, you know, with all of the extra time, uh, around, um, uh, election prep, the absentee ballot process is very labor-intensive. We've got, I, I think the last number I heard was 800 absentee ballot applications in for November's election already. That's, that's like a three-transaction thing where the request comes in and you gotta process it, you gotta send it out and you gotta get it back in.
Well, we saw it during the primaries. It's long and they didn't have nearly.
Right. So, you know, their, their world has really turned upside down in the town clerks, um, in the world. So that's just an example. I, I, uh, as soon as Lori Anderson, catch your breath, I think she's gonna come and talk to you about, uh, the budget and, um, I know she wants to do things differently around hours in that office. And, um, obviously we've had a whole lot of things kind of switched to electronic business this year, so it's really in flux.
Yep.
Uh, but I know she's, she's got ideas, but we just can't get to them because she's buried. Elections, you'll see, we're actually, budget-wise, I think we're gonna be okay, um, and it starts in line 35. You know, we, we always kind of guess on that and we guess big. Uh, we, we still need more bodies, I think, for, you know, working the polls.
They sent out a, um.
They put out a call for, for volunteers.
Oh, was that, that just go up recently?
Today.
Today, okay.
Yep.
The, on line 78, you'll see the, the, this is a, kind of a placeholder that actual expense, that'll get paid for by the reserve account, the capital reserve fund for the revaluations. That'll come out at year end. We're not done paying for it, but we don't pay for it with this budget. Line 82, legal, um, we, we, we have three lawsuits open, uh, right now, uh, but the pace is slower than we expected. The COVID has slowed down everything. Um, so we're, we're, we're probably not wrong in what all these cases are gonna cost us. They're just gonna, it's just gonna take longer.
Yeah.
Um, to get through that. Um, we've had vacancies in police and fire this year. And, uh, that shows up in a lot of different places. Everything else, we're, it's been a little light for the recycling center, that's a part-time. And we've been pretty well full all year, but you'll see vacancies, uh, saving us money, particularly on line 86, that's health insurance. That, uh, and the new insurance plan that we offered, we got some people to take that, so we're saving a little bit there. You'll see, um, uh, all of the other, um, personnel administration lines come in light. Most of that is, is vacancies and it's also, on line 90, the FICA line, that's where the tax credits are gonna come.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Come back to us. Um, that, uh, we're probably done spending money on that line item for the year. We have tax credits in the bank from the FEMLA. You know, the employees that were taking FEMLA leave and the town is getting that money back through tax credits, so that, that line's gonna come in well under budget. Our police and fire retirements, those show up in the departments, right? Not in this section. No, it's here. Sorry, 92 and 93. Those are gonna finish under, um, and I think I told you next year, the employer rates are going up on those considerably in the near future, so that's that little holidays. Personal administration. 129 is the old town hall. That's well over budget. That's the repairs that Tyler took care of with the electrical and all that stuff. And, uh, 133 is the well at the highway garage. That's well over budget. But that's, uh, pretty much the full cost in there. 192, uh, we didn't buy a police cruiser because we didn't have authority, we didn't have town meeting to tell us to do it. Ben, I still owe you an answer on, could we do it late in the year? Gunn was on vacation last week, so I haven't got an answer on that yet.
Okay.
Fire and rescue, I mentioned the vacancies. That shows up. If you look at the three, um, uh, fire and rescue lines together, you can see how, um, he's, you know, using part-time wages to cover some of those vacancies. If you add them all together, we're still under budget there. One oddball is line 198. The fire and rescue stipend, that $40,000 is usually what, uh, that's budgeted to be the, um, the stipend for the Call Firefighter Force at the end of the year. They divvy up the points and, and we, uh, cut checks around Thanksgiving for all of our Call Firefighters. In here also is, uh, the special stipend for first responders that came through as a result of COVID. Our police and firefighters got extra. That's what that 178 is, is that stipend finding its way through here. We're, we're, we've already been paid for that on the revenue side, so. That's a, it's unbudgeted here, but we did capture the revenue for that. Asphalt maintenance, line 275, we just got the bills for the first round of paving. We did, uh, everything around, um, uh, Nottingham Lake. Um, you may recall, we were planning on using this for Ledge Farm when we wrote this budget. That whole plan got thrown out the window before town meeting because of the, the numbers came in where they did and we couldn't get there. I mean, and you, you wanted to find a way to save some money on tax bills, so, um, we're gonna be well under here. We, uh, when we talked about that plan for Nottingham Lake, Sean outlined some other equipment-related stuff that we wanted to do with some of this money, but overall, it's gonna be well under. Highway in total is gonna be under when we finish, unless the weather gets really stupid, but it's probably gonna be okay there. Uh, 280, uh, this is where you see the, the impact of the changes we had to make at the recycling center. We're paying more for hauling, um, which was gonna bite us anyway, but then the COVID stuff on top of that, where we're, uh, we're disposing of things differently, cardboard in particular. Uh, so by putting cardboard in the paper dump, you know, we brought all the paper operations outside the building. We're hauling that more frequently. We are, uh, making less money as a result, you know, selling cardboard. So that's, those kinds of things are, are hitting us on the expense side there. And that's gonna continue to be a budget breaker for the rest of this year. And, um, going down further, the only other, you'll, you'll notice the rack and library lines are, are low and that's because those are programmatically where things got scaled back the most. Um, they were all, you know, all those activities got disabled and are still slowly coming back. Um, so those are gonna finish under budget. On the revenue side, you, you saw the revenues a couple of weeks ago. We reported our revised estimated revenues to the state that came in within about 5,000 bucks of the budget that we presented at the town meeting and been working with all along. So that, uh, on the revenue side is gonna come in, uh, easily well over budget because of the revenues that we report did not include our COVID grants. They have not told us how they want us to report those yet, so. Our revenues are going to be over budget by six figures, uh, when the year ends. As long as, uh, we don't get any, the legislature's done for the year, so we're not gonna get, uh, they're not gonna pull anything back from us, assuming the checks keep coming from the state. We're gonna finish very strong on the revenue side. Um, that will all fall to the fund balance at year end. Doesn't, doesn't give us extra money to spend, but it's, at year end, it will, uh, it'll fall to the undesignated fund balance, so, um, you know, it's, it's chaotic, but, uh, the bottom line, you know, just from a pure P and L kind of viewpoint, looks very stable, very good.
Good.
We'll have some flexibility to do things at year end like we often do, uh, and we'll have some decisions to make around next year's town meeting and what you want to do with fund balance. If you want to do anything with fund balance and when we come to tax rate setting time. I stuck this in your, uh, in your folder at the beginning of the meeting. We've got a, we got our fund balance number pinned down today, which happens. We haven't seen that number yet. This is a chart of it and I think I put the actual number, 1.39 million. This is a, uh, preview of where, what the tax rate is gonna come in. We're probably a few weeks away from, from that. The, uh, biggest unknowns at this point are, um, school district revenue. School district told the budget committee last week what their, their returning surplus was going to be. The school board votes on that stuff and keeps some things in reserve and, and gives the rest back to the, to the taxpayers to reduce the tax rate. We heard what that number is going to be at the budget committee. 114,000, uh, compared to like 600,000 last year. So, um, that's gonna drive a big change in the tax rate on the, in the school portion of the tax rate. There is other revenue that the school has yet to report to the state, so we can't know for sure what the rest of that financial picture is gonna be. Rockingham County still hasn't released its, um, appropriations across all the towns. That's usually a pretty stable number. And you will have to make a decision if you want to use any fund balance when we get to tax rate setting time. That's the last variable that gets plugged in to set a tax rate. And down at the bottom is the current guess at where we will be tax rate-wise with the new valuation on that MS1. And then our best guess at this point, what the total costs and revenues are gonna look like. This isn't ready for publication, you know, I don't want anybody writing their tax check.
Yeah, yeah.
Doing their personal budget with it, but, um, that's where, that's the neighborhood we're in and we've got pretty good visibility on the big number.
Chris, on this graph, the, the gray area, is that showing the recommended range by DRA?
Yep. Uh, could copy and paste that little piece, but that's the eight to 17% of total, uh, expenses. That's the range that the, that the government finance officers and the DRA.
Yep, so we're, we're at the bottom end of that.
You can go as low as 5%, uh, according to DRA. The gray here is the 8% range that we've always used for the Government Finance.
Exactly.
Officers Association.
And that big dip 2017, 2018, that's when we used some of the fund balance to offset tax.
Right. That, that's the select board using 375,000 to reduce the tax rate.
Yep.
The, the fund balance would have gone up more, or would have gone up at the end of 2019, but for, uh, two, two things. One, you, um, you encumbered a lot of money at our suggestion at the end of, at the end of 2019. We encumbered a lot of our unspent money in anticipation of doing the Ledge Farm project. Remember, if you remember the last meeting in December, we said. Remember, if you remember the last meeting in December, we said, let's grab all this and get it ready to do ledge farm in 2020. Ledge farm didn't happen in 2020. A lot of that's gonna fall through back to the fund balance at the end of this year. And the second thing that happened in 2019 is that we bought the excavator for the highway department out of the fund balance, town meeting did that. And so what, you know, we spent our profit in that, you know, in that way. That's why that number didn't go up. It's going to go up at the end of this year. Unless you spend it all and the tax rates big. It's, it's gonna jump. I can't tell you how much, but it's gonna be noticeable at the end of 2020. That was really fast, so if there's anything I want to look back around.
Under debt service, what are we looking at next to wrap up?
The next thing to fall off of there is the landfill, I think, small money. The Mulligan and Fire Station are our two biggest loans. They both finished in the same year. And I'm gonna say that's 26, 27, 20, somewhere in that range. We got ways to go on those. But they, they both, just by luck, enjoy their last payments at the same time.
Anybody else need to add anything, questions, comments? We have this assessment form here, tax credit.
27, 20.
I'm sorry?
2027.
Oh, I thought you were giving us the picture.
Oh, no. I have that as well. Does anybody not want the score of the game or you watching underlay?
Six to three. We should go.
Six, three in the second.
What if somebody's watching us instead of the game?
Oh, Jesus, I don't know why.
All right.
Which way? Oh, Kansas. Yeah, my husband texted.
I get to thank the planning board.
Impressed that it's that close?
Yeah, yeah.
So we have one.
Friday.
This week? Assessing paperwork to look at to approve disabled exemption, elderly or disabled. Someone wants to look, look that.
That's, that's the one you gotta like.
They got the right man for it, don't they? It's virtual.
Some other stuff here to sign too.
We email it to you?
Let's start with you, John, and I'll just give it to Donna on the end. Okay. Do we need a motion for that?
Yeah, do that.
We do?
Yeah, we usually say, yeah, we, it's on the agenda, move it, move to approve us on the agenda.
No, I didn't, I didn't think we ever have.
No.
Sometimes you did, we're beginning, you used to, and then all of a sudden, you didn't.
Okay.
Your signature's good.
Well, I can, I.
Right in here, the BOS will sign the intent to cut or exclamation for the map and lot.
I'll make a motion that the board approves the elderly or disabled exemption request for map 24, lot 31.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Unanimous?
You're right, we did.
Thank you, Donna. All right, so do you want to review actions for next meeting? Wow, you can hear a pin drop.
Do we have anything outstanding as far as election prep that we should be thinking about? Other than getting more bodies?
No, no, as long as you're keeping up with whatever communications is coming directly from the moderator. I'm not always privy to all that, but then I think that's all you are responsible for.
Yeah, there hasn't been anything recent.
So seeing how you brought up the election. Unfortunately, I will not be able to attend this coming election. I will have to vote absentee because my job has required me to go out of state for that week. So I will need, hopefully, if someone will be brave enough and willing enough from the town to take my place at the polls, that would be great. Can they get in touch with you, Chris?
Sure, yeah.
All right, if, I asked someone out there if they'd like to stand in my place for the day of the election, just contact the town administrator, Chris Durndale, and I would be greatly appreciated.
So are you asking for somebody to be?
Selectman pro temp.
What's the process for that?
I believe he has to, you have to select them yourself.
Okay, and so the rest of the board doesn't have input to that?
I don't believe it, because it's only a temporary.
Right. I'll level check, but I don't think so.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
I think the only person on elections, you can't do that for day-to-day business.
I don't think I'll be feeling good that day, so.
I'll be.
We'll come and drag you.
You, you wanna come down to Arkansas with me? We can golf.
No, you won't be feeling good the day before.
All right, do we have any other business or? No, do we have, do we have anything with non-public?
No.
An appointment that you wanted to discuss?
Oh, yes.
Or no?
Part-time, please.
I thought you had all dotted on that one.
All right, I'm good with that. If everybody's in agreement with it, I'm good with it.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then I guess we'll adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Wait, wait, there's paperwork that hasn't come around.
Oh, my bad, sorry.
I'm still signing. Yeah, let's. Here, you can get, you can get started. Oh, print, then sign.
Anthony Dumas.
I always do, I always sign and then I say, oh, shoot, I was supposed to print. And then I print in the signature.
I always do that, too.
Last one, you can even have a folder. Did you guys turn the heat on in here yet?
I'm starting to hear about it, though.
Are you cold?
I'm dying.
Our furnace is all.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Wait.
She has this idiot, yeah.
I thought you did it first, no, sorry about that.
Our furnace was.
This is about people that haven't paid their taxes.
The furnace is all fixed and held for this year, right?
Oh, yeah, it's brand new.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, that's what, that's what I thought. Can't wait to light it up.
All the same properties are on there.
Different ones, some names I'm not used to seeing.
Yeah, but still have a lot that are the same.
So are we addressing those as, putting the lien on or is this just for, I think it's G-Wiz for now, but.
Listen, tax lien?
Yeah.
Yeah, those are going to, those are going to mortgage research. And I'm anticipating a couple and just starting, as soon as those come back, we'll, we'll tee up some inspections. One of the oldest and messiest ones sold this year and the other of the oldest, messiest ones is even messier than it was a year ago.
Is that the one we talked about on Fri, was it Friday?
Are we gonna adjourn?
Do?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion and adjourn, all in favor?
All right.
Adjourn, good night, everybody, thank you Nottingham.
Yeah, hurry to get some, please, Tyler.